So this is the municipality of Anchorage and GBS quarterly meeting. We will call the meeting to order at 4:14. My name is Mike Edgington of GBS co-chair. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I can move to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Brianna. A second.
I can second.
Thanks, Jennifer. So we'll do this by voice for all those in favor. Hi.
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 Anyone against? Okay, we'll move ahead. Announcements are public as encouraged to ask questions, provide comment, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called on to talk. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than the other members of the public. And keep your comments focused on the business under discussion and please be respectful of everyone's opinion. So I'll dive straight into the agenda. Item number one, discuss status of contract negotiations with Anchorage Fire Department and Gerwood Fire and Rescue. Do you want to give context here, Kyle?
Sure. The Fire Department and Gerwood, Anchorage Fire Department and Gerwood Fire Department have been working together over three years to negotiate a new contract for both fire services provided for Gerwood and EMS services that's provided for Gerwood and the Ternigan Arm area as part of area-wide service. And they have worked very hard to get down to a draft contract, which should be come in front of the Gerwood Fire Board shortly. And a increased amount for EMS funding for the Fire Department, which would be $300,000 annually on top of the $207,000 they've been at for a very long time. So that would bring up their total funding for EMS to 507,500. And so currently, this increase is being proposed in the first quarter budgets, but currently shown as just 175,000, which would be for a half a year of increase. As the new contract probably wouldn't be signed till June 1st, which would be essentially seven months of increase versus a full year. Gerwood Fire really wants the increase for the full year as they've been subsidizing their EMS expenses with the funding they receive from the service area for fire response, fire protection. And both our assembly reps have put an amendment forward that will be voted on tomorrow night to bring the full funding up to 300,000, which would be retroactive for the last five months that they haven't been funded at that level. So that's where it currently stands right now.
Okay. Anything to add from the administration?
I'm not sure if you're.
This is Anna Anderson, Municipal Manager. Kyle summarized it well. I don't have anything to add. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, though.
Okay, obviously it depends on what the assembly action is, but is the expectation that it will be, it'll be proposed as full funding?
In 2021 for the 2022 budget?
For this year, yes. Well, for this year, yes.
Well, this year, the administration is proposing to prorate the amount for the start of the contract.
One moment. Right. I think that's the very discussion we're having, that our expectation was that we would be receiving funding for the full year since this has been a very long-running subsidy from the taxpayers, the service area. So our expectation was it would be full-funded for the whole year, whenever the contract started would not be prorated. So that's what we're trying to get sort of put back into the 2021 budget.
And, you know, given all the items that we had to balance in the budget, the full funding is not proposed in the documents that are going to be assembly this evening, and it is a prorata amount. But the intent for 2022 is to set the budget at the full contract amount.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we'll see how the, we'll see how that goes through the assembly. I know we've, we've definitely been arguing the case that we were expecting the full funding for this year. And it was a surprise to see it reduced to 175 from the 300 we anticipated and thought we'd agreed.
Understand. And when Chief Hetrick and Chief Weston had tentatively agreed to that amount, I did disclose that it was subject to final approval by the mayor and OMB. So I apologize for any miscommunication if that was not telegraphed widely, but.
Okay.
So we stand.
But also, understood. But also, so that's the proposal, but ultimately the decision is made by the assembly. Is that the correct way to interpret things?
I won't get into the details on powers between the administration and the assembly, but yes, in general, it is up for a vote and tomorrow night we will, we will see what they have to say on the matter, correct?
Okay. We don't unfortunately have a, have a Fire Department supervisor, the term just finished, so I can't ask for any more detailed comments about that. Is there anything you want to add, Kyle, just for conditional context? I mean, it sounds like we'll wait and see and what will happen will happen tomorrow.
I think that's where we're exactly at. Yep. And it's within the assembly's hands as to what they determine.
Okay. Anything anyone else would like to add from the board or other members of the, other members attending? Okay, I would just like to say one thing, you know, notwithstanding this particular narrow topic of the specific funding we get this year, I'd like to just extend my thank you to Chief Hetrick for all her work on the, on both the contract and this particular issue. And I'm not sure if we'll get to see you again in our next quarterly meetings. I know you have retirement this summer, but again, thank you very much for a great career as well.
Mike, thank you very much. It's definitely been my pleasure. I will say that I think Gerwood Fire Department has grown phenomenally in their ability to manage the organization and provide an excellent level of service to the community. Not that they weren't already providing a good level of service, but I think they have really done a lot of hard work to bring, bring what they're doing up to a much better standard. And Chief Weston's done a great job of getting more people on the department. So it's definitely been an honor to work with them.
Thank you very much, Chief. We very much appreciate that coming from you. We'll make sure that sentiment is passed on. Thank you. So okay, if there are no more comments, we can move on to item number two, which is recommended changes to the Secure Trash Regulation Zone ordinance. I think we were going to have at least one member of the public maybe join us for this. We had, I think we have some, we most shared it last time, some suggested changes to the language. And I would definitely, some of these actually come from discussions last year with enforcement. So I'd be very interested in any comments Jack Frost had on this as well.
And I just put up the.
Oh, yes, I see.
And Jack did give us.
Excellent.
Right before the meeting on those comments, so.
Great. I don't think I've seen them before, so. Would you like to speak to this, Jack, just about your comments?
Thank you. Do you want to just go point by point on the comments? If, so the definition of bear-resistant container, I know the interagency grizzly bear committee is, sounds like a foreign agency to most of us. It's a, it's a committee outside in, I believe they're in Montana. And they have testing standards for the, you probably already know all this, testing standards for the, for the containers. And they have recommended bear-resistant containers that they have approved. In the absence of, of a certain container being approved by the committee, they've, or we've added the, or the equivalent or greater of those standards is what it means, as certified by the waste management provider. And the waste management provider is the subject matter expert on construction, maintenance and operation of the container. So in the absence of the IGBC, we defer to their expertise to determine whether or not the alternate container, if you will, will be adequate to resist a bear.
Understood. So it's an area where there could be some clarification, but at least there's, there's understanding by all parties.
Right. This section is pretty much, the recommendation from the author is pretty much what we originally had asked. But through the public process, this is how, this is how it came out. So that was just.
Yeah, I think this is one of those issues of if the, if the bear-resistant containers actually did what they were supposed to do, there's probably be less of an issue. But it's, it, we've definitely had problems in, in Gerwood because the bear-resistant containers are not bear-resistant.
Right. And you've had some habituated bears that have trained each other. They're pretty darn clever.
Yes, they are. There's the, there's the comment is often smarter than humans, or at least more motivated than humans when it comes to what's inside the trash. Okay. Some more changes further down.
Let's see. Yeah, I just agreed some of the waste providers have, have said also that it, so it could increase costs and that sort of thing. So.
Okay.
I disagree with the, with the author.
Right. And I think this was the section I was particularly interested in your comments in because to me, when I looked at an earlier draft of the ordinance, it looked as if this was a drafting mistake and it was put in as a subclause rather than an overriding clause for the whole section. And I see.
This, this is specifically, this clause was specifically for the, yeah, well, all this is to secure trash zones.
Right.
And it doesn't fit, most of it doesn't fit the, or some of it doesn't fit the legal definition of service. But in the, in the interest of life safety, it was the intent to get notification to responsible party in the quickest way possible to try to mitigate or eliminate the, whatever situation had been created. So this is just, this one is just if I, this was just for the, was this for the broken can or just for the secure?
I think this is for the, for the whole section of the Secure Trash Regulation Zone. I think it looked, this reads as if it's just for item six, whereas I think it's for the whole thing.
Oh, I, no, you're. Actually, it was placed there. No, that's right, because it was just for item six. I plagiarized this code section from Boulder, Colorado, and that's, that's what the way that they had done it. And it's, so that's. Right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not averse to having it be the whole section or actually the whole code for that matter, including the regular trash zones.
Well, that's probably outside this particular discussion, though. Okay, and I think that was the, that is the big thing. So, yeah, so it's probably just some, it's just a couple of very small changes. Maybe one for clarification. So I know previously our assembly member, one of our assembly members suggested he would, he would help put this together and introduce the modifications, the ordinance. Unless. Sorry, did you say you'd be happy to, Jack?
Certainly, yep. I'd be happy to. And I guess. I have.
I was just gonna ask whether it'd be better coming from the administration or whether it'd be better coming from the assembly member either. Works for me.
I have some other subcode changes in, in the, in the trash handling portion that defines commercial that I'd like to get in. And, and then also, not, this is not in Secure Trash Regulation, but I'm also looking at defining animal waste and how it's handled as a large domestic animal facility. So.
Okay. I think one of the, one of the problems we've seen as a community is the, is the code was written with the assumption that once a, once a cart received certification, it was going to stay certified and that did not happen. Certification was effectively withdrawn or put on a provisional basis. I think retesting has happened already, but they haven't provided notification yet about the status of the testing from IGBC. So that's kind of, I think that's one of the reasons we were in this weird position last year of the, the code was assuming that once something had been certified, it would be, it would work. And that obviously isn't quite how it happened.
Okay.
So there's no provision in here, obviously, to deal with a situation where certification is removed or partially removed or anything else. I hopefully we never have to deal with that again, and this, this will be solved in the, in the next few weeks. We're going to announce that there. Then you can, then you design is working and we won't have the problem again.
Okay, I can recommend, I can work on that and recommend a, maybe a small amendment that might help address that.
Actually, that would be great. Yep.
Maybe as simple as if it becomes decertified, it can't be used in a secure base, trash regulation zone, something of that nature. That's fairly simple. I can, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, great.
And then just, just code-wide, we found it, we believe that it's necessary to differentiate between fines on commercial operations and residential residences. Because there are some commercial operations that have significantly more trash and it causes more problems. And so the, the thought is they need to, instead of a cost of doing business, it needs to be real for them so that they'll secure their trash too. Because we have bears all over downtown Anchorage and every place else. So we're trying to repeat that. That's the only other change I think we do.
Okay, understood. And I think there are some other areas as well that we're considering becoming Secure Trash Regulation Zones. So.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, I don't see anything else. I think we'll move on to the, to the other big one. So item number three, hand tram status for summer 2021. You start this, Kyle. I think you're on mute, Kyle.
If you're not aware, the hand tram is closed. It has been closed since 2019. We had two large, major incidents in 19 related to users, one being a fatality, another being a major injury. And with that second incident, we shut down the hand tram in August of 19 and did not reopen it. During the period that we've had it closed, we have had safety improvements designed for the hand tram. And at the same time, we've been looking at a management plan for managing the hand tram. The biggest factor that we face with the hand tram is overuse. The trantram has become a very popular destination. On the weekends, there'll be 30 to an hour wait on each side to cross the tram. People coming out there wanting to ride the tram, a lot of times just riding the tram over and coming back, sometimes just going out halfway and coming back. And the original intention of the hand tram was not to be built for sort of amusement, right? It was meant to be a way to cross Glacier Creek. It was designed and built during a time when Winter Creek, the trail that leads to it on both sides, was very much a class one, class two trail, full of mud and mud holes and very uninviting to the, maybe even the average hiker to go out there. It was more for those who really wanted to get out into the wilderness and have a way to cross. In the 20 years that it's been here, the trail has significantly improved through our partnership with US Forest Service. And, and basically have built a true class three trail out there, nice tread, easy to get out there in almost any type of footwear and, and get to the hand tram. And so it's easy for those to get to it. And so with, with increased demand going out there, we are also seeing increased maintenance needs. And, and it's become actually a, quite a big item for the Gerwood Parks and Rec Department to manage. And so, and then one thing that we also are in need of is a inspection team. We originally had inspectors who were certified here in the state of Alaska that would inspect this hand tram. It's a non-mechanized tram system, excuse me, it's a non-mechanical or motorized tram system. It's hand-pulled. And, and actually the guy who did our inspections for, for 18-something years was the original designer and builder. He worked for Alieska as the tramway engineer and head mechanic there. And so with his departure, we've run into a lack of inspection abilities. And then also a lack of support, professional support to help us maintain the hand tram. I'm by no authority a hand tram mechanic or designer or, or maintainer. I've learned everything by working with others and seeking out advice. We've had some very qualified volunteers, but it's just not a dependable system. And so between the, the ability to make the safety improvements and the ability to find a really a maintenance management team to help us inspect and respond to incidents when there's mechanical issues and things like that. It's been very difficult to bring those all back together and also manage the demand use for the hand tram. So at this point in time, a decision has been made to keep the hand tram closed, explore what options we can, you know, and, and maybe keep a lookout for that special group out there. As, as I've heard from contractors I've talked with, it's sort of a unicorn group that you're looking for because of the liability situations of being a maintenance and inspector for, for a unsupervised mechanized system in the wilderness. And then the other aspect that we're working on is right now a bridge study for crossing Glacier Creek. So a bridge to be built to connect Winter Creek and, and give a more sustainable year-round crossing of the creek. Currently, the hand tram and traditionally has been closed in the winter because it's a very difficult thing to operate when it's frozen and, and also with the snow. So, so that's where we currently stand for summer 2021.
Thank you, Kyle. Any general comments or questions from either the board or anybody else? Shelley.
Hi, everybody. Shelley with Heritage Land Bank here. Kyle, because of the vandalism that occurred, I don't, I guess, last year, last fall, maybe. I don't know. My time is messed up. But has there been any discussion, I know, I know that the basket needed to be pulled out for maintenance at some point. Has there been any discussion about how to safely keep it closed?
Yep. So this last winter, we had somebody go out and cut the, we have a multiple large chains on it. And they went out with a grinder and cut through that chain, which we responded to and re-secured. We added additional locking features to it to keep the rope from moving, which are engaged right now. And then once we can safely have enough staffing to go back out there, which I'm hoping here for the, in the first part of May, once we get our seasonal staff on, we plan to go out there and disengage the tram basket from the, the haul rope and, and then lock the tram basket within the facility by applying wood railings on the structure. So yes, we plan to redo that when we can get back out there safely.
Great, thanks. And for those who don't know, I asked because it is Heritage Land Bank land and we issue the permit to Kyle's group to maintain that. So we do have concerns and, and I know it's, it's just too stressful for you to worry about people breaking into it all the time. So thank you.
Yep. Thanks. So one thing I'd like a little bit better understanding of, and hopefully we have someone here can speak to it. I don't completely understand the, how the sort of municipal risk assessment groups sort of tie into this. So I know we don't have commercial insurance for the hand tram that we rely on the municipal, municipality self-insurance. So I'm just interested in, in the view from the administration on what the, you know, on what, or what they see the risk as and what they see as the necessary steps before it could be reopened. Obviously, from a community point of view, it's seen as a huge asset and something the community would like to have reopened if it's feasible. And one aspect of if it's feasible is whether, whether we have adequate insurance of any sort. Is there anyone who could speak on that? I guess, Richard?
Yes, from a risk management point of view, Tracy Mares is calling office this week, so I'm standing in front. The hand tram, this is just located on a property.
It's a, it's a little difficult to understand you, Richard.
Sorry. I have some microphone behind me. The hand tram, if it is located on a property, it would be included under the MOA's general liability and access policy subject to our $3 million SIR. We checked with Risk Consulting, who goes out and does our insurance policies for us. And we can certainly look into a general liability policy that were covered just the hand tram. We would just need to know what limits and how we would want to go ahead and proceed to go ahead and get that type of stuff. For policy assurance for the hand tram.
Okay, so when you say just for the hand tram, you mean just for the, so this would be separate from the general policy?
Yes, it'd be just strictly for the hand tram.
Right. And the expectation is that would be something which the, the service area would pay for? Not that I'm volunteering, but.
Yes.
Yeah. My sense is that would actually be useful, at least to give some concrete numbers for the discussion. Because I think at the moment, we're kind of stuck in a situation where the community would like it to be open and, you know, want it to be open. But there isn't a, if you like, a cost associated with that, except for, you know, how gray Kyle's hair is becoming. So I think if we actually had some numbers behind it and we could say, you know, it will cost this, that makes the discussion a lot more concrete.
That is certainly something we can go forward for. The Risk Consulting or insurance handlers definitely said they can go out to bid for that and get some quotes to come back in to see if somebody would want to go ahead and insure us for. I'm sure I can get Tracy to get back, when she gets back on Monday, to get with Kyle to talk actual specifics. You know, when we go out, we kind of like to know ballpark of what our policy limits would be. We would pick up the first, right now, our general liability policy for the MOA is we're self-insured everything for $3 million. And then after the $3 million market payouts, we then can go ahead and seek second injury recovery on these. So when you're talking a specialty item there for the hand tram, we need to talk about some ballpark figures of what we would want to go give Risk Consulting when it went out to bid to get some numbers for what a general liability insurance policy would cost.
Right.
Strictly for the hand tram.
Okay. And I think again, and it'd be interesting Carl's comments on this, but I do not think would be in, the service area would be in a position to effectively self-insure up to 3 million and then only have coverage beyond that. I think it would be a much, much lower number.
I don't know if we'd be in a position to do any self-insurance, so.
Right. So zero, I guess, is the default, isn't it?
Yeah.
That can definitely, we can go out to bid and tell them, you know, most definitely. See what they come back for, what the policies would cost us.
Yeah, I think if, definitely if our service area manager is supportive of that idea, I think that's something that would be valuable just to, to give us some concrete numbers around the discussion.
I can definitely.
If you want us to go that direction, we'll, we'll get the, we'll, we'll have them work on it for us.
I think that would be great. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make sure that Tracy gets in touch with Kyle and we will get this going forward with specifics for you. Okay, I'll, we'll make sure that, uh, Tracy gets in touch with Kyle, and we will get this going forward with specifics for you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the, um, board of supervisors, or in fact, anybody, any members of the public either, or any of the members of the administration on this topic?
Mike, I just wanted, uh, sorry, this is Jennifer at G B O S, Jennifer Wingard. I just wanted to, um, second what Mike Adukin was saying. I think that it would really help our community a lot because, uh, we feel, I think, a little stalled out on this. And so it would help a lot to have some numbers where we can start talking about a community. I know people want it, so getting us to quantify how much we want it would be helpful.
Exactly, yep. Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, I'm not seeing any other, um, anybody else with a hand up. So if there are no more comments on the hand tram, uh, we can move on to public comment. So public comment, person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, again, not seeing anyone. It looks like we have a, we had a fairly quick meeting today, which I think shows how efficient we all are. We've covered some obviously important, uh, topics, and I am very much looking forward to seeing how, uh, discussions occur tomorrow in the assembly regarding the fire department. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, working with Jack on the Secure Trash Regulation Zone and hearing more about the hand tram, uh, insurance side. So, um, with that summary, if anyone would like to propose a, uh, motion to adjourn?
This is Brianna. I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, in a second.
All second.
Thanks, Jennifer. I think we'll do this by assent. Who is in favor?
I.
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.